We'll call it order tonight's committee, the whole, for the Auburn City Council meeting for December the 21st, 2021. The City Council should have the minutes from our December 7th committee, the whole, for the additions or corrections to those minutes, if not, as they're moved or approved.
They're moved.
Have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. The Water Works Board, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. Term begins January 7th, 2022, and ends January 6th, 2028. The incumbent, Jeff Clary, has served two full terms, and so I'd like to thank Mr. Clary for his time. Since that is a vacancy, I'd like to nominate David Reeves.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second for David Reeves. Any discussion?
I'd like to also make a nomination, Mr. Mayor.
Let us, I think, our procedure, we go through the, we go through the whole, we go through a vote on this before we take another nomination, correct, Megan?
That's what you have been doing.
That's what we've been doing. Hold on just one second.
No, no problem.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion, comments, or questions about Mr. Reeves' nomination for the Water Works Board? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Lindsey, did you catch that, or do you need a voice?
Right, Griswold Parsons. Okay.
All right. The motion carries. We'll confirm Mr. Reeves later on in the agenda. 2021 redistricting briefing, City Manager Crouch.
Before we go in further, Mayor, let me make it clear for the record, I didn't say yea or nay on that one, but I'm not voting, the way it sounded is I voted, I didn't want to vote against, I didn't want to vote against Mr. Simpson or Mr. Reeves. I was going to vote for Mr. Simpson had it been different, but you see what I'm saying? I didn't vote on either one, but let the record reflect, I didn't want to vote against Reeves. I played with wording.
Thank you, Tommy. We had two great candidates, two great nominations. Certainly appreciate both of them being willing to do this.
I could have went along with either one of them.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Tommy, for clarifying that. Yep. Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Crouch.
All right. Just this evening, we have a consultant, Norman Walker, that I had mentioned to you before with Balch and Bingham, and we want to talk about the redistricting process. It's later on the agenda. The purpose of having Mr. Norman Walker here, the city attorney is also here, but not presenting this evening, is, is to go over, just want to make sure you're clear on the state and federal criteria that the city must follow before you officially have this on your agenda. You know, we talked about this in November, but Mr. Walker's here to be able to answer your questions, you know, present information. There's a lot of information being shared. You're going to hear a lot more information this evening from the public. You've read a lot of public comments, and we want to make sure you're tracking and understand legally, and that I've got Mr. Walker here to explain to you and answer your questions, anything that you need to learn about. He'll remain here through the public hearing this evening on, on the redistricting item and be available to answer questions of the City Council.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Walker, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I was asked to look at the proposed plan that was prepared by city staff, and I want to compliment them on doing a good job. I believe it meets all the requirements of the law, principally the federal constitution, the Voting Rights Act. Certainly, it meets the first requirement overarching all redistricting is equalizing populations as we get the next census data. And you're all aware, of course, that there was tremendous population growth in the city of Auburn between the 2010 and the 2020 census. The new districts rebalance the population, I mean, the new district plan rebalances the population among those districts within the plus or minus 5% deviation allowed by your rules. It also comports with the standard traditional redistricting criteria that have been approved by federal law. The plans are reasonably compact in relation to each other. They are contiguous. They generally preserve the cores of existing districts. They respect communities of interest such as neighborhoods, and they do not put pair incumbents in the same district. A bonus is that Ward 1 functions as a majority black district. It's not actually a majority black district, but because much of the population in that district is, are students who don't vote, it, the city has the advantage of having it function as a majority black district, even though it does not have a majority of black persons. I understand that today, there was an alternative plan proposed by the NAACP that came in at about 3 o'clock, I believe, today, and we'll have to look at that and, and see, see, I haven't obviously had a chance to appraise that. I do notice that in that plan, it proposes two minority districts, and those districts are composed by aggregating a series of minorities, all of the black citizens, the Asian citizens, the American Indian, Pacific Islander, and Hispanic citizens into those to create minorities. They're fairly low minorities. One is, Ward 1 is 51 points, 52.70%, according to the data, and of course, we'll have to verify the data. The other one is much less of a majority, it's 50.18% according to the data. One of the problems with the approach that's taken there, and it's not necessarily insurmountable, is that there will have to be a showing made that all of these different groups, Hispanics, Asians, Pacific Islanders, American Indians, and blacks are politically cohesive. That is, that they all support the same candidates and that they all suffer racially polarized block voting. That is, they, they're not normally able to elect their candidate because of block voting by whites, which means that whites tend to vote for white candidates instead of candidates of color. So those are all things that, that we'll be checking out, and I'll be getting back to the city manager about those later.
Any questions from the dais? From Mr. Walker?
I do have one.
Sure.
There's a lot of data in here, and I know there's been a lot of conversation over the course of the last few months, and there's some, you know, some big swings of land masses and so forth. So on the surface, it looks like it's big changes, but if you look at the data, in your opinion, does this proposal by the city manager provide equal opportunity for persons of color, black voters in Auburn to allow meaningful participation in what the political process allows and also representing a candidate that, of their choosing? I know it's a long question, I'm sorry, it's just, there's a lot happening.
I think I understand what you're saying, and I'll, I'll give you my best answer, and if I don't get it right, let me know.
Sure.
Auburn's got, got two problems in that regard. In order to draw a classic Section 2 majority-black district, you have to have a black population that's sufficiently large in terms of its number and sufficiently compact to form a majority in a single-member districts. There is not an area of Auburn, is my understanding, and from the data I've looked at, where there is a large enough black population that, that is also compact enough to be in one district to form a majority. So you can't draw in Auburn a classic Section 2 majority-minority district. But as I've pointed out, you do have in Ward 1 a district that's, that's composed primarily of a significant black population and a lot of students who don't vote here. So it acts as, and, and has historically performed well as a majority-black district. So in that regard, that, that is more than, than would be required by Section 2. It's just that, that district is drawn that way. Another issue is that a lot of the population growth, and I think, I mean, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but the figure that sticks in my head is like 37% population increase, which is astonishing. A lot of that is, is not in accordance with traditional housing patterns. In other words, at one time, long ago, people would move to Auburn, and they would move to a white neighborhood or a black neighborhood. That's no longer the case. People moved to Auburn, and they moved to the neighborhood they want to. And so people are much, neighborhoods are much more integrated than they used to be. And so if you're trying to find a collection of, of a popula, of a minority population to draw into a district, but instead, they're spread out in an equal manner, that makes it impossible to draw a, a majority-black district, but, but it's not a bad thing, because it shows that we're becoming a much more integrated society.
Yeah.
Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess my question, if I'm understanding what you're saying, and I'm not really for real, so, so the, the map that the NAACP, well, the map that the city of Auburn proposed is starting from first.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it draw up the one, Ward 1 to be a minority-majority district.
Well, it, it draws, it, it, it's not drawn that way, but it functions that way. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, the, the map, and I guess you've had a meeting with, have he met with the, or?
Walker has not.
Or he knew to.
Yeah, we, we, city staff met yesterday morning with the NAACP, yesterday, Monday, yes, that's correct, at 9:00 AM.
So he hasn't seen the proposal.
No, we, we got a proposal this afternoon, and which is what, you know, yesterday, we did not have the alternative map, and we were, you know, informed yesterday, absolutely working on it, we'll have it to you soon as possible. We got that the middle of this afternoon, and so my staff and, and our consultants have not had a chance to, to fully review that, which I'll have Norman talk a little bit more about what a review looks like. We absolutely will do that, but let's get through your questions a little bit, and I'll have him touch on.
Well, my question is going to be based on if he's already looked at, at the map, so I guess that'd be.
Taken a quick look at it, but not a deep dive, is that?
Yeah. And what, 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 what strikes me as the most important thing about that is, we can't just, the equal protection clause says that we can't assume because of someone's race that they think this way, or, or that, that we can treat them a certain way. We can't classify on the basis of race. So what that means is, we can't just lump Hispanics, Asians, blacks, Asian, I mean, Pacific Islanders and Native Americans together as minority group without some evidence that, in fact, they perform as a cohesive minority group. What we'll have to find is evidence that those minority groups all tend to support the same political candidates before that can be a valid minority-majority district. And I hope that the NAACP will be coming forward with that evidence. It's crucial.
Well, I guess we'll just have to wait. I, I, my question is, I guess he can't answer the question I really want to ask him, so until we have a public hearing, then maybe I can.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if the question has not been answered at that time, then I, I'll re-answer it and ask it and restate it or whatever.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I look forward to that.
And he will be here, as I said, all the way through the public hearing and until you've moved on to the next agenda item.
Okay.
I have a quick couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Is there a precedent that you, that, that we could draw on that, in terms of finding evidence to support the idea that the several minorities together form a cohesive block? When you say looking for evidence, is there a precedent in the past that would show that?
Yes. There are a number of court cases that, it, it's not established clearly in all circuits. However, our circuit, the, the 11th Judicial Circuit, Federal Court, and the Fifth Circuit, from which we came, both accept the idea of minority districts that are composed of different sets of minorities, provided there's proof that they, that they are cohesive. And what the courts look for in those cases would be, for example, how would you want to show that these groups are working together on common issues? Well, you would, you would, you would want to find campaigns in which they work together, either to promote ideas such as a school tax, or something common to, or to support the same candidates. You would also want to look at voting returns, to the extent that you could get those to show that they support the same candidates, or that they're not able to elect their chosen candidates because of white block voting. So that's the type of data that's going to be important and that we'll be looking for.
Thank you. My other question is, I know you've only briefly looked at this, the offering of this alternative map. Is it safe to say that the technique by which Ward 1 is created by the inclusion of a number of students in that central area of Auburn, have, is this, the alternative map drawing on the same type of strategy with the second proposed district minority-majority tapping into the concentration of students in our center?
It doesn't, I'm not sure I can answer that question.
Okay, no problem. I understand. Thank you.
Bob, if you'll remember that, and I'll take notes on it, we'll try to get that answered once we've taken a deeper dive.
Thank you.
So, quick question, because I've not seen the map that arrived late this afternoon. Is this a different map than the one that was provided?
Correct, and I, the NAACP plans to speak during the public hearing. We've preloaded a presentation, but it's my understanding, and they'll clarify if I don't have this correct from our meeting yesterday. The proof of concept was a proof of concept, and a requirement that, that they indicated they were trying to meet was, proof of concept is that you could have two districts that are majority-majority aggregated. And also, in our discussions yesterday, they had indicated that they were absolutely working on an alternative map that was, would be an actual proposed alternative map. The other one's just a proof of concept, and they will clarify if I did not say that correctly, but that is my understanding from our meeting yesterday, where we had good dialogue about this, and the ask was, please take a deep dive. You've looked at proof of concept, and we had been looking at it for two weeks, but please take a deep dive on the alternative map when we submit this, because this is the proposed alternative, the one we want you to spend the most time on.
Questions? Maybe to piggyback Bob's first question, on the, I guess regarding the Section 2 portion of the Voting Rights Act that you, you referenced earlier, that being the, the heart of trying to establish a, you know, a black or minority.
Right.
District. Understanding the limitations, you know, in the, in the mix of the students in that current district or the one proposed, are you, is it your opinion that the city's map that we saw first, the city's proposed redistricting plan, does that legally fit those criteria?
Yes. I mean, it, there is, there is not actually, I don't see a Section 2 obligation to create a majority-black district, because you don't have a sufficiently numerous population that's geographically compact. But you have the happy circumstance that you have a, a fairly compact black population that while it's not a majority of a district, functions as a majority of district, because the other people in there don't vote.
And I guess that's the heart of, you know, understanding our unique situation there, you know, that, that happy happenstance. I mean, you, you don't think we're going to run afoul of not meeting the requirements?
No, 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 I don't, no, I, no, I think the, the plan satisfies the federal constitution and the equal protection clause and every other law that I think might be relevant.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, I just want to understand, when we say minority, trying to create another minority-majority district, are we just, and I notice everybody using the word black, but are we just talking about a black district, or are we just talking about minorities in general? You know, because I don't, I don't want nobody, and I, and I'm not going to speak for the NAACP to just think that we just try, that they're trying to create a black, another black district. Minority does not just include black people.
Right.
Okay? So I don't think that's the, and I'll let them speak on that when they get up, but I don't think that's what they're trying to create, so I don't want everybody to have that impression that they're just trying to create a black, another black district. Because as you say, mine's is not really, it's a minority district.
Right, right.
Okay? And it's just that most of the people in their ward, in, in Ward 1 are blacks. The majority of the minority are blacks. Okay? So I just, I just want to.
No, you're right. And I, I was trying to draw a distinction between Ward 1, where a majority of the minority people are black, and where we don't have an issue of showing, well, where, where I think political cohesion has already been demonstrated, although that it's not really a Section 2 district. I was trying to draw a distinction between Ward 1 and the other ward, where they want to draw, as you point out, a minority, which is an aggregation of different minority groups. So I, if I said it wrong, I'm sorry, I was trying to make.
No, 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 I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear that, because, you know, I just don't want everybody to have the perception that's what they're trying to do, and I don't think that's, that's, that's what they're trying to do.
And in the data provided, it, it's clear in how it's been provided that minorities are aggregated, straight, straight through all the data. It's voting age, population, minorities, aggregated, you know, period. And so, I mean, it's, it's also broken down, but yeah, all data we've received is exactly what you're saying.
I think in both of the, what are called minority districts in the NAACP proposal that was received late today, the black population, I'm not sure if it's total population, I'm not sure if it's voting age population, I'm not sure if it's citizen voting age population, is in the 30s. So again, that's, that's the type of thing when I say we'll have to check that data and see what it is.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, sir. In the, the information that was submitted today, late today, by the NAACP, there was accompanied by a statement, and I'm going to read it just so I don't get it wrong here. So, "Section 2 Voting Rights Act, the proposed alternative map offers two majority-minority districts, which we understand to be the number that the city of Auburn is required to have." Is the city of Auburn, based on your analysis, required to have two majority-minority districts?
Mr. Griswold, I don't understand the basis for that statement, and I'll, I'll wait for the NAACP to speak on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And again, he's not going anywhere, so.
Okay. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Anything? City manager, is anything for us?
I was asked a procedural question earlier, if the, if the council's willing to consider this, about the denial of unanimous consent on an agenda item, which is the redistricting for, versus, which normally, in denial of unanimous consent, if the council chooses to not hear an ordinance on first reading, it automatically, everything, including the public hearing, moves with it to the next meeting. I would like to recommend, if, if you're interested in, in still opening a public hearing and in having, having it this heard at another meeting and keeping a public hearing open, that you consider somebody moving after, if unanimous consent is granted, you consider to move to postpone after the public hearing has been opened and closed, and that you move to postpone it to January 4th and continue the public hearing at that date, if that is your desire. Then it doesn't, even, there's no way it runs afoul of anybody. Councilperson Whitten had brought up, what about deliberation? There's no question about that, and also, not to confuse the public, public, when you deny unanimous consent, some people think you're denying an agenda item, and that really means in English to everyone, that you're just not going to deal with that item on the first reading. And so however you choose, but this actually makes it clear that you'll hear it again on another date, and that if you're so inclined to keep the public hearing open, which I recommend that you reopen it at another meeting to give the public ample opportunity to speak. And again, you're, you're on a timeline to the middle of February, so you can postpone it as you choose moving forward, but that would be my recommendation, if you're willing to consider that. If that's your desire to handle it that way.
Any questions for city manager regarding what you just said? Okay.
Of course, of course I do. Okay. So you saying that, once, once we get to it on the agenda, and it's a subject for unanimous consent, and we consent that, everybody agree with it, have the public hearing, after the public hearing is closed, then that's when you.
Move to postpone.
Okay.
And any of you can do that, and I'll be happy to walk, walk you through it if that's your desire at the time. Otherwise, if you deny unanimous consent, this council's procedure, typically, you do not ever open a public hearing. When you do that, it automatically picks up and goes to the next meeting, and you have a lot of people here who may like to speak this evening. Some have presented some presentations, so that'd be my request. And I, you know, I've heard from several of your interests in having the public speak tonight, and procedurally, to not confuse things, it's, it's up to you, but that's an option. But in vetting with the city attorney, both work, and you can open a public hearing either way, but postponing is a little less confusing.
Good. Thank you, Megan.
I have a procedural question that's going to be on item 8C, which is the Engineering, Design, and Construction Manual. If we have specific changes that we'd like to see in that manual, do we bring them up, do we go ahead and deliberate, or, I guess, start over? Is it an option for us to ask for specific changes within that manual?
You would pull it off a consent, and you can absolutely do that. I think it would be helpful if there are changes that we aren't prepared to address, or we need to get more information, that at that time, we can walk through those. City Engineer Fraser can answer questions about the manual, and if anything, you could postpone that item if you need more information and we need to get back with you on something to January 4th. I mean, this needs to be something, if, we may need some more time to get back with you and get some additional information based on discussion.
Thank you.
And then also, just a reminder, we have four, or five agenda items, four or five, that I emailed you about, four, that need to be postponed at the request of the applicant. And again, while that's at your discretion, I'll, I'll walk you through that when I introduce those ordinances and the resolution that it involves. And again, we've got that emailed from all applicants. And I guess last, because we have about five minutes, one of the Cox Wire rezoning items for Plan Development District, staff is going to ask that you add some conditions to that. This is a, a change in how we've been doing things, and it's not anything that's a surprise to the applicant. This has to do with our Plan Development Districts, we have many in the city, they're surviving 15 and 20 and 25 years, and we just want the exhibits, the master development plan and so on, to be called out directly. There's a number of exhibits with the ordinance. This has been tracked with the city attorneys, and it's nothing, it's a surprise, but this is catching a new procedure between planning commission and city council, and that's all, and we'll walk you through that at the time. It also includes with that particular Cox Wire Plan Development District, the applicant had agreed that a section of this community would be active adult only, which is a 55-plus community, and there's an email in your packet where they make that clear, and that's the other condition that we'd be requesting to, to clarify. Even though the Plan Development District kind of locks some things down, it's clarifying and also saying to you and the public that this isn't going to be another type of housing. It's, it's the active adult 55-plus, which was, was a big thing, and this is the first time I want to commend the applicant. We've had somebody offer to do that upfront and say, this is what I said I'm going to build, and this is what I'm going to build, so. And we'll, we'll walk you through that at the time of that agenda item.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So.
And any of you can do that, and I'll be happy to walk you through it if that's your desire at the time. Otherwise, if you deny unanimous consent, this council's procedure, typically you do not ever open a public hearing. When you do that, it automatically picks up and goes to the next meeting, and you have a lot of people here who may like to speak this evening. Some have pre-sent some presentations, so that'd be my request. And I, you know, I've heard from several of your interests in having the public speak tonight and procedurally to not confuse things, it's up to you, but that's an option. But in vetting with the city attorney, both work, and you can open a public hearing either way, but postponing is a little less confusing.
Good, thank you, Megan.
I have a procedural question that's going to be on item 8C, which is the Engineering, Design and Construction Manual. If we have specific changes that we'd like to see in that manual, do we bring them up? Do we go ahead and deliberate, or I guess start over. Is it an option for us to ask for specific changes within that manual?
You would pull it off a consent, and you can absolutely do that. I think it would be helpful if there are changes that we aren't prepared to address or we need to get more information, that at that time, we can walk through those. City Engineer Fraser can answer questions about the manual, and if anything, you could postpone that item if you need more information and we need to get back with you on something to January 4th. I mean, this needs to be something, we may need some more time to get back with you and get some additional information based on discussion.
Thank you.
And then also, just a reminder, we have four, or five agenda items, four or five, that I emailed you about, four, that need to be postponed at the request of the applicant. And again, while that's at your discretion, I'll walk you through that when I introduce those ordinances and the resolution that it involves. And again, we've got that emailed from all applicants. And I guess last, because we have about five minutes, one of the Cox Wire rezoning items for Plan Development District, staff is going to ask that you add some conditions to that. This is a change in how we've been doing things, and it's not anything that's a surprise to the applicant. This has to do with our Plan Development Districts, we have many in the city, they're surviving 15 and 20 and 25 years, and we just want the exhibits, the master development plan and so on, to be called out directly. There's a number of exhibits with the ordinance, this has been tracked with the city attorneys, and it's nothing, it's a surprise, but this is catching a new procedure between planning commission and city council, and that's all, and we'll walk you through that at the time. It also includes with that particular Cox Wire Plan Development District, the applicant had agreed that a section of this community would be active adult only, which is a 55-plus community, and there's an email in your packet where they make that clear, and that's the other condition that we'd be requesting to clarify. Even though the Plan Development District kind of locks some things down, it's clarifying and also saying to you and the public that this isn't going to be another type of housing, it's the active adult 55-plus, which was a big thing. And this is the first time I want to commend the applicant, we've had somebody offer to do that upfront and say, this is what I said I'm going to build, and this is what I'm going to build, so. And we'll walk you through that at the time of that agenda item.
Okay, any other questions? Should I move to adjourn?
May I move?
All right. We'll open tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for December 21, 2021. Lindsey, with the roll call.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Iswal.
Here.
Hovey.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Smith.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Under announcements tonight during the Committee of the Hold, the city council appointed Mr. David Reeves to the Auburn Water Works Board. I certainly want to say, echo what Ms. Witten said, and thank Jeff Cleary for his outstanding service to the Water Works Board for two full terms. And we also had a briefing on our redistricting plan to this point that was given by a guest that is still with us here tonight. Just a couple announcements I have is, this past week, I was invited and attended Christmas parties held by our public safety units from our fire and police. I just want to say again, thank you for inviting me, but just how blessed we are to have the men and women that protect us each and every day, and how great it was to be around their families for a little while. Those are some very special and unique people who are very brave, and just to see the hope and happiness that are in their heart, and they're all very proud to represent our community. And I just, it was great to be with them and share a little time with them. Yesterday, we had a job fair at the Village Mall, and I want to thank all the leadership of the Village Mall for hosting Hope for the Holidays Job Fair. And Ms. Crouch, I didn't know if we had someone here that could give us a small report on how that went.
Mr. Dunlop, do you want to give a report, or you want me to provide the information? So, you know, we had worked through our Workforce Development Auburn Training Connection efforts to have a job fair at the Auburn Mall, and Whole Property Group's been a longtime great partner of the city, and it's unusual for them to do this, but they made an exception so that we could try to find a really good, accessible place, busy at the holidays, and people could also, you know, maybe shop Auburn all at the same time while they're applying for a job. But we had about 110 people, from engineers to customer service workers, come through. We had about 10 of our local companies there, and many left with interviews for new employment. And then our employers were very, very pleased with the high caliber of the location, because it's usually a little different than coming to a workforce center or something else. So it's been a very positive thing at the holidays for people. And we also had some restaurants and retailers and other folks there, too. So it's very, very highly productive, and again, we're thankful to Whole Property Group to partner with us to allow use of the mall to do this.
Good, thank you, Megan. And then finally, I just want to wish our entire community a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and hope that everybody is safe in their travels, and hope you have a blessed and wonderful time with your families. Any other announcements from the council? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. The cost to the city for the Dixon versus City of Auburn lawsuit is $41,260.51 as of 30 November. So please note that this is a announcement of fact, like all the previous announcements on this topic, and is presented without comment or opinion.
Anyone else on the council that'd like to make an announcement tonight?
Yes, I would.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to thank the Fire Department for inviting me out to eat with the gentlemen from the Fire Department, and it was absolutely an amazing event. And the food was, when I say absolutely great, it was great. And I just want to remind Mr. Register that his wife said I could have that recipe for that corn casserole, so did you bring it tonight? And also, I also want to thank Mr. Al Davis for opening up the Boykin Community Center for the scouts that we have in the community. We had a Christmas party for him yesterday, and it was a success. We had the stage decorated like the North Pole. We had the audience area decorated as Candyland. So it was a beautiful occasion, and those kids really enjoyed it. And I just want to thank you again, Mr. Davis, for giving us the opportunity to be able to do something in the community for the kids. And most of these kids are underserved, from the underserved communities, and so there was a lot of, we had a Santa Claus there, and there was a lot of gifts given away, and each child received at least four gifts. So, and I want to thank everybody who donated some of those gifts, and it was just a wonderful event, and you really fulfilled some children's heart on yesterday.
Good, thank you, Connie.
So I just want to say thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else in the council have an announcement? Okay, we'll move forward to Auburn University Communications, and I will have to admit that we weren't expecting you tonight.
Hi, everyone. Yes, Abby was like, you don't have to go during break, and I was like, no, get away from Birmingham for a minute. Speaking of Birmingham, the Birmingham Bowl is next week on the 28th, so as a Birmingham native, I'll be going to that, it'd be cool to see Auburn in my hometown. Not much going on, y'all probably noticed the silence, the quietness must be nice. I'm driving through the streets, it's quite nice, not all the crowds and everywhere, so. And then we have the men's basketball game tomorrow, I think it starts at 5:00, the doors open at 3:30. Another one next Wednesday, we're playing LSU. And then lastly, I wanted to mention Lauren Bradford, she is an Auburn alumna, and she's Miss Alabama, she just won her first runner-up at Miss America. So we love to see Auburn alumni doing great things, so that's pretty much it. Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you.
Love getting to Auburn whenever I can, so.
You be careful going home. And we did notice the students aren't here.
Yes.
But we miss you and look forward to you coming back in January. All right, now's an opportunity for citizens' communications on items on tonight's agenda. This is just items on tonight's agenda. Remember, there are a number of things on our agenda that we will have official public hearings for, and I would ask that you wait till that time if you'd like to speak to the council regarding that. But if there's anything else on our agenda tonight you'd like to speak to the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Department 111, the comments that I'm making here are not related to the redistricting plan. They are related to several items on the consent agenda tonight related to the Boykin-Donahue project. I added up all the money while you were at the Committee of the Hold, and I think the total was $2,614,091 that has been allocated for these projects, including the proposed library, the proposed cultural center, what was originally a pool that's now a splash pad, from what I read, and other items. I would like to thank Councilwoman Taylor for her leadership, not only as the representative of that community, but also her leadership in heading the Northwest Auburn Task Force, and from the people there who have put input into these things that they wanted. And I'm sure, this is just the start, I know, but, and I don't live in Northwest Auburn in that district, but I've been there several times. And I'm sorry I missed the party yesterday, I didn't even know about it until tonight, but that's okay. I'm glad everybody was there, had a good time.
Well, it was actually, it wasn't a public thing, it was for our scouts. It was, yeah, we just gave it to the scouts.
But that's good, that the scouts were the guests of honor in the Candyland and all that, that was just sweet. And I think we should, I should also thank Mr. Davis also for his involvement, I'm sure, pretty much. And the reason why I mentioned this also is because last year, when I was more active in the Northwest Auburn Task Force before the COVID-19, Mr. LB Jackson had asked me to look into figures as to how much money this city is spending on places like Boykin. Well, hopefully tonight, Mr. Jackson and others will be satisfied that some money is being allocated. And also, another item on a consent agenda I noticed concerning the relocation of the environmental services, I know it has a recycling center, because I go there all the time to recycle, and I'm pretty much interested in what's going to be the impact of where a new recycling center would go, and what impact it would have on the recycling efforts here in Auburn. The city, I'm sure you all are very much interested in that, and as a recycler, I would like to continue to do my part.
Hopefully, you'll see no impact, because it'll be right across the street, correct?
Right, where the fleet, fleet services is now, where we maintain our vehicles, it'll just move across.
Good, that means I won't have to walk from one side of town to another in order to do recycling. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who would be next? Okay, we'll move forward to city manager communications.
All right, Mayor, our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Mr. Griswold?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove 8C, that's 8 Charlie.
Okay, anyone, I'm sorry.
8E2, echo 2, and 8E4, echo 4. I would like to remove 8A, the minutes.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to remove 8E681011.
So 8E10 and 11. Ms. Taylor.
6.
6, 10, and 11.
6, 8, 10, 11.
6, 8, okay. All right, anyone else? We've got them all. Tommy, you need anything? All right. Okay, city manager, first one's the minutes.
Item 8A are the minutes from the December 7, 2021 meeting.
May for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion of second, discussion, Mr. Dixon.
Yes, I just wanted to add that Mayor Anders and Councilmember Parsons responded to Mr. Wilkins. That's the only thing I wanted to add to the minutes that was not clear that that was there.
Any other questions?
That was during the citizens' communication.
Yes, sorry, citizens' communication, open forum, item 12.
Any other additions?
Okay, got a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes carry forth.
All right.
With comment, yes, thank you, Kelly.
With additions, yeah. All right, next item is item 8E2, no, 8C, sorry, because 8A was above, sorry. Item 8C authorizes annual updates to the Engineering, Design and Construction Manual.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, under the traffic calming section of that, it changes the period of time between reviews. So if something is reevaluated, it's changed from one year to two years, and the same thing under reevaluation on the, a couple paragraphs over, it changes from one year to two for reevaluation previously denied requests. I would like that to remain at one year to allow the public the maximum opportunity to challenge and make recommendations.
All right, any?
Y'all need a page number to look at that, a reference.
That'd be fine. Is there any other discussion from the council? Does anybody have a question or thought? And Kelly, I didn't know if you wanted to kind of dive a little deeper into just your thought on that, or did you, was your explanation, you gave?
On page 3-1, it, the change marked in red, says if it's not found to be warranted, the reevaluation of the request may be only reviewed after a period of one year, changing it to two years, with submission of a new application. I believe that the public would like to leave that at one year. Well, I won't speak, so I won't say the public would like to. I would like to leave that at one year so that the public has an opportunity to reassess their traffic situation in their local neighborhoods.
Okay.
And the same rationale applies on page 3-7, paragraph 352.
City manager, do you mind asking what the rationale of moving from one year to two years?
Absolutely, I'm going to have City Engineer Fraser respond to the rationale. I also, though, want to make clear why it says a year. Right now, there have been times in my tenure and under the previous city manager where we've reevaluated in under a year, and those also didn't meet the manual criteria. There's a couple of things that happened. One, the city engineer, you can appeal anything to her, and she also works for the city manager who likes to ask her to do things anyway. But there are, sometimes we have changing conditions in the area, and this works both ways, where we need to reevaluate in under a year. And sometimes, we've also had a number of residents say, well, you did the counts in the XYZ section between these addresses in our neighborhood, and that's not the right spot. We'd like you to move it somewhere else, and we've done that. But let me have City Engineer Fraser address why it changed from one to two years, and then we'll take further questions about it.
Yeah, thank you. The main reason is what we found is most of the requests that we've been getting, we've been actually getting some requests that have come in year after year, and the conditions have not significantly changed, and the results don't change. So it's just an effort to at least space it out a little bit, to give conditions a little bit more time to change, as opposed to going through the same exercise every single year. And as Megan mentioned, in some cases, there have not been substantial changes in the neighborhood or conditions that would warrant the traffic calming. So it's really just an exercise, and often, sometimes the citizens are very frustrated because the things aren't warranting, but the conditions aren't changing enough within a year.
All right, any further questions or comments from the council?
But, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, should we leave it to where there's flexibility there? If we're having some situations where it may be less than a year because of conditions, and then you're saying a majority of them are not changed after a year, but should we allow for some flexibility as opposed to a two-year hard line? Or how, rather, how can we?
Well, I want to say in practice. Well, I want to say, in practicality, if a neighborhood is requesting it, and it's outside the timeframe there, and we've said that, they are likely to contact you, and then you contact me. And we look at this, and usually, we proceed. If you want that formally written, my suggestion would be this, is how about let's remove this for tonight, move the rest of the manual changes forward, we'll come back to you with just that section. Would that be something the council could do, and gives us some time to talk about something in the middle, or not at all, but it leaves it where it is today?
Okay, so procedurally, where we are right now?
Procedurally, you would remove, to councilperson Griswold's point, the, yeah, the 3.11, and then, or you can just say the changes, councilperson Griswold, just to remove those. You just amend it and remove, you can also just say, yes, Allison?
Is the recommendation to leave it at one year?
Leave it at one.
And then we can come back?
We're going to come back, but to not hold up the rest of the manual changes by postponing until we do, it would just be better that we leave those two areas he pointed out at one year, and we'll come back in the next month or so, explaining this further to see where you'd like to go with it, if that's acceptable to the council.
Okay, so we have a motion in second right now, we're in discussion. Ms. Crouch, where do we need to go from here? Do we need, do we need an amendment, or do we need to?
Yeah, you're just, you're going to amend it to remove the references to, for traffic calming.
Okay, so Mr. Griswold needs to offer an amendment to get a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Griswold.
Yeah, I need to figure out how to say this. What is this, 8? I would like to propose an amendment to the resolution that the items in paragraph 3.1 and 3.52 that refer to one year versus two years for review for traffic calming be deleted.
Second.
Just remain as is.
Remain as is.
Yes, at one year.
Okay.
So, remain as is.
Remain as is.
Second, we got a second? All right, we have a motion in second.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, see any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the amendment carries. Now, we still have a motion in second.
Yep, you're ready to go.
For the original motion, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And the balance carries, all right?
Hey, item 8D2 authorizes a contract with Davis Architects Incorporated for the Boykin-Donahue Campus Splash Pad and Recreation Center project in the amount of $1,091,000. The design contract includes schematic design, design development, and construction documentation, formulation, as well as administration. The recreation center scope includes two full-size basketball courts, fitness space, locker rooms, and restrooms and classroom space, and future plans for an eight-lane indoor pool.
Do I have a motion?
May for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second. Mr. Griswold, I believe you asked for this to be removed.
I did, thank you. Because the city has had so much public input on swimming pools in general, I would ask that we do a brief overview of where we stand on pools, whether they be here or at the other facilities, and also, where is the location of the proposed splash pad that is being voted on?
Yes, on the master plan that you're looking at, we'll take the splash pad first, where it shows and you can see it, and I'll have to get to the items to get to the number. Shows an outdoor swimming pool.
Number six.
It would be in that location.
Okay.
And then, overall, with the swimming pools, as I've been telling you, and Becky will correct me if I'm wrong. Do I have the wrong location of it, Allison? Did you move the location?
Splash pad has been moved over, I'm sorry.
The splash pad has been moved over closer to the green space area that's kind of near the library.
Oh, so it's not in the recreation center piece? And this has been changing daily as we've been scoping, so, but it's not shown on the master plan. And that's where the confusion is coming from. So, but the outdoor pool in the future phases is still not, we're not currently designing that, correct?
And the indoor pool will have lap pool, but it'll also have some, like, recreation or something capable of teaching water aerobics and that sort of thing as well.
So, stay there, Becky. So, to move to the Lake Wilmore. Yeah, the Lake Wilmore property, Becky chose to not sit at a table, so she gets to stand at the podium before you. So, the Lake Wilmore property that we delayed due to COVID, and we've talked about a few times, and in the mid-biennial budget presentation I brought to you, that those plans are complete and ready to go, and we have changed the plans to include a cover for the pool and a heating system for the pool there. And I'm waiting on just final estimated pricing to come back to you to recommend, and I will recommend to you that we move forward and go out to bid, but I want you to know what the financial implications with the budget are when we do that, to bump that project back up and get it underway. That delivers gymnasium space for basketball, that delivers a fitness facility, and that will deliver an indoor and outdoor pool. You know, it's the same pool, and that is the fastest way that we can meet the requests of our citizens to provide a heated pool that they can use year-round. That is, and that is a recreation center that was already a high priority in the plan, and it also delivers much-needed gymnasium space. Did I miss anything on that, Becky?
That's correct, and if we do move forward, it would be ready to go in 2022.
The Lake Wilmore?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's, it's ready, we can put it out to bid tomorrow, but I, what I want to give you, as soon as we get past the first of the year, is what the financial side of that, and I'll just probably do that at a committee of the whole, or just a special work session. I just want to go over it with you, make sure you're good before we go out to bid, because I want to make sure we're being fair with contractors' times, and it not come back to you and say, where did this come from? Thank you, you know, so. But I'm hopeful, and I have run through financial modeling with the finance director, and we can afford it, and it won't be at the expense of another project, because we've been conservative due to COVID with our budgeting, so we're in good financial shape. All right, thanks, Becky. But you might be back.
Thank you. All right, any other further discussion or questions?
Yeah, can I ask a question on that? Now, you said a location. Okay, so the location of this recreation center is actually going to be on Mary Brooks Drive.
You know, the location of the recreation center where the Public Works Building sits now is, that's the parking lot, and then a little over, a little kind of toward Environmental Services and Recycling, it kind of sits up on a top of the hill there. And so, yeah, there'll be Mary Brooks Drive access to this complex. You'll have a huge parking lot there, and then that, and the library's kind of over where the recycling center is now, along with the cultural center, which we've also referred to as the Rosenwald School and a museum. But it's really more of a cultural center and Rosenwald School. That will be on the current recycling center property.
Okay.
And the splash pad that has been relocated is now a little bit in the green space by the library, which sits adjacent, it's over, closest to Donahue.
Oh, it's closer to Donahue?
Mm-hmm.
Is that number six right here, where it's, okay, what, the splash pad?
Megan?
Yeah.
The splash pad is between the buildings, kind of between the library and the rec center building.
So, it'd be where number four is, that's not the garden anymore?
Number 10.
Which buildings?
The biggest pavilion.
Where number 10 is?
Oh.
The splash pad's, it's conceptually, that's where we've discussed it with a consultant. Of course, as we get into programming and laying the site out, it could adjust, but that's where we've conceptually talked about it, between the buildings.
Becky, do we have an updated site plan?
No, so, you know, when you do a plan like this, this is an outcome in the budgeting process that we were looking at, where we ended up with a close to $40 million budget for what you see on here, and a full build-out. And we appreciate the Foresight Group, and they're a great partner of ours, but if we spend $15,000 and $20,000 every time we adjust it, they have to reprogram some things, try not to do that. So, the splash pad is the outcome of a lot of public requests for a splash pad, and also a way, especially in a walkable neighborhood, to give the kids a place that they can go and cool off in the summertime easily, you know. And we've also got a lot of really young children in Auburn, that's our highest-growth area of the city, and this will be an amenity for young families and, you know, young children alike that they can easily get to, that's here. Our outdoor pools are heavily used, but we felt, because we don't currently offer a splash pad, that this would be a bigger priority at this time. Now, all of this, and every one of these contracts you're looking at tonight, please understand, we're going through a programming phase and a schematic phase. That's going to give us budget numbers, and then we'll be back to you in the spring when we're building the budget with how we think we can phase this, based on what we can afford with the other priorities that you set. And then, an agenda item that has also been pulled and to discuss, the citizen survey plays a role in that as well. You know, as we begin to build the budget, and what your priorities are will be set based on all those things.
Okay. Ms. Taylor, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, so we do have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
All right, hold on just a minute. All right, item 8E4 authorizes a contract with ETC Institute for the city's biennial citizen survey in the amount of $16,000.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold, I believe you asked for this to be removed?
I did, thank you. I've not been impressed with ETC's polling data in the past. I believe that the areas of, high-growth areas in North Auburn have been underrepresented in their survey results, in their survey offerings. So, I would prefer not to select the same company again.
Megan, to make some kind of request that we, that we cover an area, certainly a high-growth area, is Northwest Auburn. And I want to be honest, this, when I was representing Ward 2, I heard this same criticism that that area of town was not being, weren't receiving as many, I guess, opportunities to participate in the survey as other. But is that a specific request we can make to ETC to really focus on that area, since that is a high-growth area?
You've got to protect the integrity of the data and the process, and you can't overly target any specific area of town. So, there's 2,500 surveys sent out. The frustration of our citizens remains that we have citizens that would like to participate that didn't get contacted. And you can't go to the website, and we've had people do this and get frustrated that their survey wasn't counted. If you don't have a certain number and name parameter and weren't invited to the survey, your survey won't be counted. This is because they're looking for, you know, to get a minimum of 600 return surveys and a 95% confidence level. So, we certainly, and I will be happy, and I, we have our deputy chief information officer from our GIS group here, and he may be able to speak to any data or other things that we provide to them to help. And I can certainly, and I'm happy to emphasize to them, that you need to be sure that we're capturing all the customers and other things in our outlying areas as much as anywhere else. Chris, do we provide data to them that helps?
We provide geography to them, that they can use their, that they can track their traffic.
And so, I mean, I'll be happy to, you know, comments duly noted, and we'll address that directly with them once again, and make sure as best that we can, but it also has to remain statistically valid for them. And again, this is just one of our tools. The importance of using ETC, I was one of many staff members that, when I first came here, we had written our own program, and I had the privilege of calling people and doing the citizen survey myself way back in the intern and early staff days. And the planning staff, we so love to work all the overtime to do this. But ETC, when they were brought in in 2004, one of the things that was important to us was benchmarking, not just against ourselves, but against peer cities nationwide, to see there's areas that we trend much better, and there's some areas we may not trend well in. And we do appreciate that as a staff, because this is also in the services that we provide, not just a budgeting tool, where it gives us a lens on what we're doing. And there's good things, outcomes out of it, like we learned, our library director's sitting here, that our citizens are extremely satisfied with our library. And, you know, he reminds me when it's time for a raise how satisfied they are. But, not really, Tyler's not like that. But at the end of the day, there's good data for us that we use in the level of service that we're providing, or where I'm putting priorities and attention of the staff. So, and this helps us with that. I would say one thing that we didn't get to with this council, that I'm hopeful we'll get to moving forward, is goal-setting of the council, and some things and initiatives that they would like to see as we move into the next council term. And this is just a tool to inform the council, it's not the end-all, be-all. It's a benchmarking tool that we use. So, I do understand what you're saying, but it's just one of the tools that we use.
Sure. Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
All right, item 8E6 authorizes a contract with Foresight Group Incorporated for the Boykin-Donahue Campus Site Design in the amount of $700,745. The site design contract includes wetland delineation, surveying, geotechnical reports, schematic design, design development, and construction documents and permitting.
May for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Ms. Taylor, I believe you asked for this to be removed?
I did, and I was, I actually asked for 6, 8, 10, and 11, I believe it was. And I just wanted to sort of kind of give someone to give, you know, just a briefing on, Dr. Denmark got up and spoke about the monies that's being spent in the Boykin area. And so, I just wanted to sort of brief, you know, the community on what those dollars are for, which I know he said, he calculated and said it was like 2-point-something million, and to let also the people know that, you know, there's more money to be spent. This is just, I guess, the beginning.
Yeah, I think the best way to summarize it, this is the beginning. I think a few of you have said things to me like, you know, design contracts are not the least expensive thing we do. They tend to be a percentage of construction, they become a necessary thing along the way, where we have to fully design, and our staff does not, other than engineering side of things have the capabilities, and we don't have architects and residents. But one of the challenges with the Boykin project is, is when the indoor pool piece came along and other things, and we've got a library, and we've got other things. We're looking at a $40 million project with 14 or so million sitting in the budget for it. So, much has to change in the biennial budget about how we phase the project. I don't see staff not proposing to you that we move forward with the project, but don't want to say that, that I believe, based on other demands for recreation facilities, that 100% of this project at its maximum size would be built out of the gate. So, we're trying to figure out with these design contracts, by the time we get to budgeting, you know, what can we build for what dollar amount, so we can give you guys an idea of when you're prioritizing things, where you can pick and choose between some other projects citywide. You know, there's things, we've been very careful. The library contract would be, you know, a project A and a project B. A would be a 10,000-square-foot library, say, and if you do B, that's a 20,000-square-foot library. And this gives us the ability, when we built the library we have today, we only built a portion of it, and then years later, we expanded it. So, we're looking at ways to deliver the most at Boykin through these contracts, you know, and make the dollar go the furthest, delivering the most services. And until we get some of these schematic numbers and begin the design, we can't inform you better and help set those priorities without that information. But yes, millions of dollars are being spent, and that goes the same with the MLK streetscape that's not on here, that's moving forward as well.
All right, any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
If you want me to continue with 8E8, it's the same, it's a program management budget. Do you want me to go through all these, or?
Well, design, I guess, and?
8E8, yeah, is, and I can, you can leave these on consent, or I can do them individually, because you had pulled them. What's your preference?
Well, if you don't mind doing them.
I don't mind. Item 8E8 authorizes a contract with Hoare Program Management for the Boykin-Donahue Campus in the amount of $553,796. HPM will provide planning and program management and development services for the project, as well as coordination and oversight of multiple design consultants.
May for approval. Second.
Have a motion in second, Ms. Connie, any questions or comments?
Um, I guess, basically, the, the, um, the, the comment that you gave for 6, I was actually referencing it for all of them, as for, you know, just seeing how these projects. And I noticed that for 6, it was design, and this one is planning and budget development. And then the others are design and engineering, and architect design, and that type of stuff. So, I would just really want you to explain to, you know, the use of the monies, and that, you know, that this is just the beginning of the project, and?
It is, and Hoare Program Management, as a program manager, helps us. We have a multitude of capital projects, and they help keep things moving forward, and they help us get pricing done and other things, and keep our staff working on other things that need to work on.
So, this is just getting the project started, these budgets here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's getting the project started. Yeah, it's getting the project started, and it's actually all the way through design for the first phases of the project. But we won't determine the final design piece until we get schematic design, which is all built into here. It's a multi-phase process.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm good with eight, 10, and 11 then.
Okay. We'll stay right here with eight for right now. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
If I understand correctly, 10 and 11, you're good leaving on consent. And so you're.
Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda has been approved.
Right, under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 is a request from Kevin and Dawn Flanagan to annex approximately 3.54 acres located on the east side of Beehive Road and approximately 0.15 miles south of Wimberly Road. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its December 9 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing, hearing, none. Is there any discussion or comments or questions? Seeing none, Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9A2 is a request from the Industrial Development Board of the City of Auburn to annex approximately 5.78 acres located on the south side of Corporate Parkway, east of Riley Street, and north of Lee Road 868. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its November 9 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, is there any discussion? Okay, Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B1 is a request from Brett Basquin on behalf of Dawson Family Limited Partnership to rezone approximately 49.14 acres located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Cox and Wire Roads from rural to development district housing. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its November 9 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this issue, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from the council?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to be on record stating that this says Dawson Family Partnership. That is not my family, that is distant relations.
I'll buy the exit.
Used to be Chief Dawson over the Auburn University campus, and we are distant cousins. And I will no way profit from this endeavor. However, I do think it's a good project, good for the area, and, but I won't get one dime out of it, so.
Thank you, Tommy.
Make that very, yeah, really, make it very clear.
Thank you, Tommy.
And I didn't get to try to get the bike lanes removed, get three lanes in there, because I knew it was coming. I didn't know it was coming when it happened. So I about hurt that enough. I've been accused of actually manipulating the system to get three foot lanes put in and get the bike lanes taken out because this development's coming in. Folks, I'm not that kind of person. I think everybody should know me by now. I go out of my way to make sure I do things right. I always have, where I was raised, I'll do it the day I die. So rest assured, I'm up front. It's an open book. If you want to know anything about me, just ask me. Don't ask somebody else and expect them to tell you the truth about me, ask me. So that's about all I got to say about it. But I think it's a good project. We had a town, we had a community meeting on it, and it was very favorable. I think the developers very likes Auburn, and I really think it's a great deal for us. The streets are totally self-maintained, it's a private deal. When you pull off wire or pull off Cox Road, it's not our responsibility any longer as far as street maintenance, and they keep the property up very well. 55 and older housing, and then assisted living thing on the front of it. And Megan, just when you want to comment on what the developer did and the agreement and?
Yeah, we'll do that on the planned development district. We'll do that on the next one, absolutely. That's a condition that we're asking to just be added for clarity.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B2 is a request from Brett Basquin on behalf of Dawson Family Limited Partnership to apply the planned development district overlay to approximately 49.14 acres of property with a base zone of DDH located at the southwest corner of Cox and Wire Roads. Planning Commission voted or recommended approval at its November 9 meeting by a vote of five to one. For clarity, on all planned development district requests, staff recommends the council consider amending this ordinance to include the developer or applicant-provided exhibits, as well as the condition about residential portion of this development being 55-plus. And that is a condition that you, there's an email from the developer's representative in their packet stipulating that. And again, when we met with the developer early on about this project, he was very convicted about delivering the type of housing product he said he would deliver, and that's why we have that email saying we're happy to do this. You have other examples of, in the Cary Creek development, you've got an active adult 55-plus community there and some others, and that is the only allowable by federal law restriction on housing you can provide. And so it's actually very much a thing. And so, but this is something that they had touted for an age group and potential retirees to move to Auburn.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? All right, seeing or hearing none. Any discussion or questions from the council?
Did you have a public hearing already?
Excuse me?
Did you have a public hearing already?
Gosh, there is a public hearing. I apologize. Excuse me, I'll open the public hearing. Thank you. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. Thank goodness you don't. All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right, any discussion from the council?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Crouch again on this.
Yeah, could you, if you could amend the motion, if you're so willing to just include the exhibits, because this tracks with a PDD, and these are developer-provided exhibits, as well as the 55-plus condition. Mr. Foot, the planning director noted that in his executive summary, which is just after the agenda item summary for this item, it's "Development and Use of the Residential Area Shall Be 55-plus Age-Restricted Community Consistent with Applicable Federal Regulations." If you're good with that, just say so move, and that will be.
So move.
Okay. So you would vote on the amendment? Yep.
All right, so we have a motion second. Do we need discussion on the amendment? Everybody good? All right, do we need to do a roll call vote, or?
Let me ask one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Just to make it clear for the, I think I'm clear, I'll make it clear for the citizens. In no way can they come back and say, we're not going to build a thing for 55 and older and say we're going to put single-family dwellings in it.
Mr. Foot addressed that with this condition added.
Yeah, with the condition in there, if they decided they wanted to do that in the future, they have to come back and submit an application to modify the PUD to remove that condition of approval. So we come back to the city council ultimately.
Okay. They'd have to start a planning commission.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A whole new application to amend.
And again, this is something the applicant offered to do, which we don't see very often, and we appreciate that.
That's one reason I was so pleased to hear and speak. I was very impressed with him willing to be willing to do that, so thank you, sir.
All right, so we do have a motion in a second on the amendment. Megan, is this a voice, do a voice vote, or do we need a roll call?
Go ahead and roll call it, so there's no confusion.
Okay, so this will be a roll call on the amendment. Go ahead, Lindsey.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
No, not here.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. All right, so we still have a motion second on the entire ordinance here. Is there any other further discussion on that? Okay, Lindsey, with the roll call.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon? Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
All right, item 9B3 is a request from the Industrial Development Board of the City of Auburn to rezone approximately 5.78 acres located on the south side of Corporate Parkway, east of Riley Street, and north of Lee Road 868 from rural to industrial. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its November 9 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, Lindsey, roll call.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B4 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of James Road LLC and FAB2 LLC to rezone approximately 679.4 acres located south of Mrs. James Road and west of the Camden West subdivision from rural to development district housing. This project is known as Old Sanford. The Planning Commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of two to four at its November 9 meeting. The applicant has requested that this item be postponed to the February 1st, 2022 city council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Is there a move?
You have a choice at this stage to move to postpone or to open the public hearing.
Yeah.
And if you move to postpone, the public hearing will move with it.
Yep.
Yeah, I moved to postpone to a date certain of 2/1, February 1st of 2022.
Second.
We have a motion second to postpone to the February 1 Auburn City Council meeting. Any discussion on that? Yes.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate Councilwoman Witten's motion on this. The fact that we don't have a development agreement finalized yet, and also because this is such a huge project, we don't want to try to push anything like this through just prior to a holiday period when the public may or may not be available to comment on it. So I'm in full agreement, so thank you.
And if I may add, it fell on this date because of legal requirements of a planning commission to city council. Not the applicant's choice per se, or staff, just how dates fall on legal requirements.
All right, so we have a motion second on the amendment. We're still in discussion. Anybody else want to say anything regarding the amendment?
Postponement.
Excuse me?
Postponement.
Postponement, excuse me. All right. So we need to do a roll call vote on the postponement then?
I think you're fine if, for a voice vote.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this will come back up on February 1.
Item 9B5 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of James Road LLC and FAB2 LLC to apply the planned development district overlay to approximately 885.05 acres of property with a base zone of DDH located south of Mrs. James Road and west of Camden West subdivision. This project is known as Old Sanford. Planning Commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of one to five at its November 9 meeting. The applicant has requested that this item be postponed to the February 1st, 2022 meeting, city council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
So the same procedure as last time? All right.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
All right, have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
I do. I'd like to move that we postpone this to a date certain of February 1, 2022.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion second to postpone this until February 1, 2022. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll postpone this until February 1.
Item 9B6 is a request from Brett Basquin on behalf of PSM Alabama Holdings LLC and TD Development Incorporated to amend the Hamilton Place Planned Development District for property located at the northeast corner of Moores Mill Road and Hamilton Road. The amendment would include the incorporation of an additional 4.21 acres to add 33,000 square feet of office space and change the classification of shopping center from a neighborhood shopping center to a community shopping center. The Planning Commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of two to four at its November 9 meeting. The applicant has requested that this item be postponed to the February 1, 2022 city council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
I do. I'd like to move it to February 1, 2022.
You'd like to postpone?
Postpone it, yes.
Okay, there's a move to postpone until February 1, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion second to postpone until February 1, 2022. Is there any discussion?
I would like to make a note, this item and the last two items at the Planning Commission meeting, not that it would have necessarily changed the vote, but we had three planning commissioners absent from that meeting. And when we have such important business in front of the Planning Commission, I think it's really difficult when you have three people out making these decisions. I just want that to be reflected in the minutes.
I have a question for the city manager, if I may. In your description of it, you described the Planning Commission's failure to pass a motion as opposed to recommended denial.
Right, it's a Roberts Rules. You know, and people like to debate Roberts Rules all day long about whether or not you can make negative motions to keep the public from being confused. You always move for approval and second it. If you're in favor, you vote for it, and if you're against it, you vote against it, and that's what happened. It was a positive motion for approval, but it failed because only two people voted in favor and four people voted against.
Thank you.
And it's just a recommendation to you, they're not the final authority.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion second to postpone to February 1. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll take this up on February 1.
Item 9C is the 2021 redistricting plan that reapportioned city council districts following a federal decennial census as required by Alabama State Statute 1143A-33. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
We have a motion and a second, see anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Here in 9, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, we ask that you please come forward and give your name and address for the record. And we understand that the NAACP might have a presentation they would like to make. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Sure. So this would be the time for that presentation.
Good evening. To the mayor, to the city manager, to city council members, and all other elected officials. I'm Billy U. Allen, president of Lee County Branch 538 NAACP branch. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager and our staff for the meeting on yesterday. The meeting was positive, it was productive, and it was healthy. Secondly, I will hope that in the future, we will be able to continue to have meetings as such. And we look forward to that. We want to make sure that you understand this is not an adversarial type relationship. We want to partner with you to redraw the lines for the wards here in the city of Auburn. And lastly, our goal is to redraw the wards to totally reflect the 2020 census demographics. Thank you very much.
I can take my time today because I don't have a time limit. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Letitia Khalif, and I am the vice president, the first vice president of the local NAACP branch 538, and I spoke to you two weeks ago. So what I have put in front of you is a packet of information, so do not be afraid. We have no intention of walking through it line by line, page by page, so that's the good news. However, what we want to do, though, is really calibrate this conversation. And we want to spend some time talking to you about how we got to this process and answer some of the questions that we have heard. So that packet that you have in front of you, I just wanted to kind of give you this table of content so that as you're looking through the package, you can kind of see what it is that we're talking about and see the process. So basically, we have the census data, we have all the map criteria and the information and things that we considered when we were putting together our initial proof of concept. Then how we developed that map, we've given you that proof of concept. And then we want to talk a little bit about the timeline for the process and then make some observations that we've already shared with the city manager. So let me just kind of say a little bit about what you see on page two. So that is just the same data that you gave us. So it's nothing new here. It is just a reflection of how the population has grown and how the minority population is more diverse than what it has been. So that's good news, right? So you told us that Auburn's minority population grew from 26.5% of the total population to 36.8. That's all we're doing is presenting back the fact to you. But what I want to remind you is that is what started the conversation. That is why we, as the NAACP, began to look at this process because we saw the significant increase in the minority population, whether that was black, whether that was Hispanic, or whether that was Asian. So when you get into page three, which is section two, so the only reason why we're giving you that information is because when we start talking about map criteria, it has been very important that we define the hierarchy. What are the key things that we must consider when we are creating a map? So basically, that's the federal criteria, and that is what we have been communicating to you in our various emails and all the information that we have been sharing. It's all about one person, one vote, and compliance with section two of the Voting Rights Act. That is what takes priority. Now, we do know that there's all kind of additional criteria that we want to adhere to as well, and that we know that you adhere to because they are important in getting a map that works for everybody. We want to be reasonably compact and contiguous. We want to make sure that we preserve the communities of interest, of course, to the extent that's possible. And we want to make sure that we consider you and the protection of you as incumbents into your right areas when we're drawing these maps. But when we were doing our proof of concept, we did not consider that. We knew that that additional criteria was important, but we were focusing on what does the law state? What does the law state based on the fact that we had a significant increase in our minority population, not just black, as Councilwoman Taylor said, but we considered the minority population as a whole, right? So when we start talking about the census data, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about how we developed our map. So, you know, we have no control over the census block. It is what it is. That data is given us by the Federal Census Bureau, and we have to work with it because it's universally applied. So it's nothing we can do with that. It is what it is. We just accept it, and we move forward, and we try to make a map that works. So our only goal in the proof of concept that we sent you was, can we draw a map in a way that would allow, allow a two-majority minority district to be drawn based on the federal criteria? We said, let's just start at the top, let's start at the, with the hierarchy, the governing document, right? That was all that we based it on initially. So I know we heard lots of conversation today about this whole aggregation of minority, and we're going to talk about that. I won't talk about that because that's not my expertise, but our map person would definitely talk about that. But absolutely, when we started off this journey, we did look at the minority population as a whole. And then I just want to say this too. I am a quality director in the medical device industry, right? It is a very complex and highly regulated industry. So we understand, and I understand law, I understand regulations, but one of the things that we encourage you guys to also look at is the application of the law and the application of the regulation and the intent. Because as you all know, there are more ways than one to scan a cap. And as I shared with, you know, our city manager yesterday, I'm an engineer, but when you go to solve a mathematical equation, you can get to the answer in a different number of ways. And that is all. We are here offering you a proof of concept, and then, as you know, we have sent you an attorney that met, and we just want you to be open. We want you to understand that we know what the law is, and we are, in our opinion, meeting the intent, and we'll talk about that more in detail. So I gave you a timeline as well. The purpose of that timeline was really just to show you our level of commitment to this process. We didn't start on this yesterday. I knew nothing about redistricting, probably about in March, till I started getting the call to action from the NAACP. Pay attention, the census is coming out because this is what this is about. This is why we do the census, right? We do the census because we want to understand the demographics in the community, and we want to make sure that the maps that we draw, those maps that elect you as our city council people, reflect the growing diversity of the population. So we just put that there because we wanted you to kind of understand that we took this seriously. And I think someone even said, you know, maybe two weeks ago, that we didn't know anything about you guys for creating the map. Well, we weren't necessarily. What drove the NAACP to create the map was the fact that you, the city proposed a map that did not reflect what our preliminary observation said that the map should reflect. So I just wanted to put it on the record that there was no intent for us to hold out some information. Our intent was just to see, because if you presented a map to us that we felt like was fair and equitable and representative of the growing diverse population, then guess what? We would have been done with this conversation, and we would be voting tonight, and there would not have been a map proposed at 3:00 today, which several of you have pointed out. And so, and I'll speak to that in a minute, because it takes time. We're not cartographers. We had to hire someone to help us do this. We had to give input into the process and share with her what we know about our city, but that's not what we do, so we can't turn maps around. And I would probably, if I talked to one of the city planners and even talked to make Councilwoman, not Councilwoman, talked to city manager Kraus yesterday, even she shared, she can't do the maps. And that there are people that do that for her as well, and then she takes those maps and makes sure that the legal people review it and then turn it to you. And I'm pretty sure that you guys don't know how to do maps either, right? Or I could be wrong, maybe you do. So I'm only saying that to say that it takes time. So the reason why we sent that map at 3:00 today, and I want to put it on record that we did submit it, it is because we had sent a note to the city manager saying that we want to understand what is important to you. We know that we have to meet the federal criteria. We know that there's some other additional criteria that is important, but we want to make sure that we put a map in front of you that would be palatable, that you would accept, that you would say that that's what I was looking for. So we met yesterday at 9:00 AM, and then some of us went to work. So we had to then put in the time to make sure that we turned that map around as quickly as possible because we promised that we would do that. So I just wanted to put that out there. There was no ill intent to wait until 3:00 right before this meeting to start to send you this map. But anyway, so before we get into the details, because I know that's what you want to hear, one of the things that we wanted to share, and I'm not getting into the proof of concept because we're beyond that. We're just sharing with you how we got there, but we know what you want to talk about is the map. But one of the things that we want to do, because we all had to learn through this process, right? So we shared some observations with the city manager yesterday. So process, people don't understand this process. This is not something that we sit around and talk about because it's something that doesn't happen but every 10 years. And so one of the input that we want to give to you is that those open houses that we had, we have to make sure that we do better, whatever that process improvement is. Because this is not an easy topic. This is not anything that the average person can understand. So yes, we have open houses, yes, we put maps up, yes, your city planners were there to kind of walk you through it, but you know what? I can't ask an intelligent question if I don't understand. I can't ask about something that I don't know. So what we encourage the city to do in the future, when there are complex situations like this that needs to be addressed, that we take the time to communicate the public, educate the public, so that they can give the valuable input that you say you want in terms of getting to something that is more reflective of the community. So the last thing I would say before I turn this over to the next person is that I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we are here to do the right thing. And one of the things that just doesn't sit well when we start talking about trying to continually improve and trying to get a map that works is we understand that the city has done their job, and they have submitted a map. And that is all that they are expected to do. But we have also submitted a map. And we're not necessarily saying you got to pick one over the other, because as in any continuous process, I would think that it's iterative. I don't know who has the power to do what, but we're putting forth a map because we do feel like it's better. We do feel like it's more fair and representative. And I can't try to talk about the summary terminology that Mr. Walker used about the political cohesion and whether or not we all suffer the same. Yes, I would hate to think that we're going to just walk away from this with this sentiment that, well, and I'm just going to say black folks because that seems to be what the focus is on, because I can live in the same neighborhood with my Councilwoman, Beth Witten, that that means because I'm openly able to live wherever I want to live in the city, that we should ignore the fact that we have a 37% minority population here in the city of Auburn. We should not ignore that, right? So we have to do what it takes to make it work. Continuous improvement is about iteration. If at first you can't get to XYZ, what do you do? I'm an engineer, we problem solve. We go back, we relook, we get better. And that is what we're asking you to do. We're not saying someone did something wrong, we're saying you didn't look at it in the same manner. Maybe you didn't look at it from the right lens, or maybe you didn't consider everything. Or even if you didn't, when someone now presents something secondary, we're asking you to be open. That is why we're here today. That is why we have submitted our map, and we just want you to do the right thing. So with that, I will turn this over to Tabitha, who you have met, the famous cartographer.
Left and right, okay. Good evening. I have a thousand papers. That's how you know I'm supposed to talk about the technical stuff. So I want to talk a little bit more about some of the technical issues that are at hand here.
Can you state your name?
Oh, yes, sorry. I'm out of practice.
That's okay.
My name is Tabitha Eisner. I live at 4349 White Acres Road in Montgomery, Alabama.
Thank you.
So I want to talk a little bit about why we did the proof of concept. As you've probably seen in multiple documents now, one of the core legal precedents, the court, Supreme Court cases that we look at is Thornburg versus Gingles. So Thornburg versus Gingles established three requirements that have to be met, three preconditions in order for a court to step in and insist on the creation of a section two district, as they're commonly called. And those requirements, the first one of those requirements is that it has to be feasible. The minority population has to be, it has to be feasible to create a district in which that minority population forms the majority. Historically, that has meant 50% plus one of the population. There is some debate about whether that's strictly necessary. I'll talk more about that later. The second requirement is that there be racial cohesion, that there be cohesion among the people who make up the minority group. So any minority group, as you know, can be broken into subcategories. Not all black folks are African Americans, some are immigrants. Whether we include everyone in the same minority group or not is not as much about some official breakdown as it is about that political cohesion question. So we have to demonstrate that there is political cohesion amongst the minority group, however it is defined. Third, we have to demonstrate that the non, that the majority group, the non-minority group votes in a sufficient block manner to prevent the election of candidates that the minority group would prefer. So those are the three preconditions, Gingles preconditions, we'd call them. So the first one, right, is that you have to be able to get to 50% plus one in a reasonably, on a map. You have to be able to create that map. And so that's why we did the proof of concept map. We were like, listen, we're seeing this map put forward by the city manager, it only has the one district, maybe it's not even possible to draw a second district. So they contacted me and said, how do we find out if we could have a second? And I said, step one, just see if it's even physically possible to draw that second majority minority district. So we did that and decided from that point to proceed. So we were hoping we would be, you know, we'd be able to sort of chat with you all about that. I think that the way that the state law statute is written, the city manager can only present one map, and so we don't really have like a structure or a format in which to work collaboratively on presentation or creation of an alternative map. So we have to create one. Cool, no problem. We created one. But just know that the proof of concept was not intended to be anything other than proving that we met that initial precondition, Gingles number one. So now, Gingles number two. Are the minority folks, the black population, Hispanic population, and Asian population in Auburn, is that a coherent voting block? Do those folks have political cohesion? Good question. How do you find out? So as Mr. Walker said, the preferred method would be to look at the results from the polls. So to be able to look at precinct data and look at a precinct that is more heavily minority and see whether the folks in that precinct are voting overwhelmingly for the same candidate. And you can combine data across precincts to figure that out. Except that in Auburn, we only have so many precincts. So there's not data at Auburn, at the level of the city of Auburn, to show whether minority groups do vote in a politically cohesive way for the same candidates. And your seats are nonpartisan, so it's not entirely clear how to prove that. So if we can't look at that exit polling data, or if we can't look at the ballot box data, then we're left looking at patterns. They call it the totality of circumstances, is the term that the Supreme Court uses. So the totality of circumstances includes things like, how many people, how many minorities have ever been on the city council? Not very many. It includes things like, in other elections, in general across this region, do minority groups tend to vote together to have similar voting patterns? Does that mean they would vote the same way in a nonpartisan race? Not necessarily. We're only getting to the edge of that issue, but we can look at that. We can look at whether candidates make appeals to racial dog whistles during campaigns. So we haven't done an adequate analysis of all of that data. Not my specialty, not something I know how to do. None of us have that, have that expertise. But we do think that based on what we know about voting patterns across Alabama, that both the Hispanic and Asian populations tend to vote largely similar to the way that the black population votes. And so there's good reason to believe that that coalition of minority groups does function as a politically cohesive block. So is that, is a, so we call that a coalition. A coalition district is a district in which there's not one minority group that makes up the majority, it's a coalition of minority groups. There is hot debate about whether, oh, I have slides. Somebody should help me. Is that the right one? Sure, we'll look at that one for a little while. So in a coalition district, no one minority group makes up the majority of the district. And it's hotly debated whether the section two of the Voting Rights Act protects coalition districts or not. of the Voting Rights Act protects coalition districts or not. But in our circuit, circuit court, so far, it seems like, yes, there is an acknowledgement that minorities do act as a politically cohesive group. And I can, you know, answer questions about where that is in case law if you're interested, but I won't bore you if not. So Mr. Walker used the term a classic Section Two district. A classic Section Two district is one minority group. True. But increasingly, our world is becoming more diverse. There are so many more people in the 2020 census that identified as being multiracial. How in the world do we hold that as a standard? That you have to be 50% plus one of one racial group when so many more people are identifying as being multiracial in one way or another? So this question about coalition districts is going to become more and more pressing in our public debate. But so far, the Supreme Court has not ruled on coalition districts. Only circuit courts have ruled. And our circuit court has been supportive of coalition districts. Worth noting as well that Auburn's population, Auburn's demographics are very similar in terms of the Hispanic population is about 4.2, 4.3% of the population, much like, so Alabama as a whole is 4.3. Auburn is 4.2% Hispanic. The Asian population statewide is just 1.9%, but here in Auburn, it's 10.55%. And the black population in Auburn is less than it is in the statewide. So, you know, I think probably the best data that we have for determining whether there is racially cohesive, politically cohesive voting among this coalition of minority groups is to look at Ward One voting patterns. So Ward One is already a coalition district. It doesn't have any one minority group that reaches that 50% plus one threshold. And Ward One has consistently elected minority candidates. So that's good evidence that when a coalition is formed amongst minority groups, a minority candidate can be elected. But it'd be great if we had some other data. I just don't have any to offer. So let's move on then to the proposed map. All right. So here is our alternative map. I know, it's super hard to look at because it's so small. If only Auburn were shaped differently. What can you do? Okay, so we wanted to show you this alternative map, things that we considered when making the map. We asked, we asked Ms. City Manager, Ms. Crouch. Sorry, I knew that. I knew that. I just struggled for a moment. We asked Ms. Crouch about what the priorities were. She reiterated she shared the same priorities we do of one person, one vote, so population equality between the districts, compliance with the Voting Rights Act. And then keeping incumbents in districts is a nice to have. Having compact districts that don't look like octopuses, always nice to have. Keeping the core of districts intact, always nice to have. So those are all things that if possible, we'd want to do. So we made this map and we also sent you a link so that you can zoom in as fast, as far as you possibly can. Hopefully you got the link. We can get it to you if you don't have it. And we also, we looked at the map that the city manager had proposed and tried to make ours as similar as possible. So we went with the same basic shape that Ward One has had historically. We went with keeping several of the wards within kind of the city circle so that there are urban wards and suburban wards rather than having lots of wards that have a mixture of urban and suburban. We have a couple that are a mixture, but tried to keep that to a minimum. Recognizing that the student population is less frequently showing up to vote, we tried to be attentive to that question. But also, we can't. We can't make a district, you know, have more people in it simply because we know that voter turnout is lower in that district. Federal law doesn't allow that. What else did we do? And we paid attention to where the incumbents were located and tried to draw a map that would not force two incumbents to run against each other. Pardon me. Takeaway is, please take a look at this map. Let us know what it is you like and don't like about it. We can make changes. We make changes all the time to this map. So if there's something that makes sense to you that you think, gosh, it'd be really nice if this particular block were over here or over there. You know, we're interested in accommodating people's input. So this isn't the only map that we would ever propose. We hope to be in conversation with you all about that. The law does not require that you be proactive about granting minority representation. It doesn't require that. The law says that if you don't do it, someone can bring a lawsuit. And then the courts will look at all of those factors, those Gingles preconditions, and determine whether the lawsuit is warranted and whether a district has to be created, whether one or more districts has to be created. But there's nothing in the law that prevents you from being proactive. The Supreme Court has specifically called out that it is acceptable legal fine for municipalities, governments of whatever shape and size, to proactively create a Section Two district, a majority minority district, in order to avoid that kind of litigation, which is a hardship on the city. If you have to go back and redraw the lines later, it's a pain for citizens, for you, for everybody involved. Lots of money is spent that doesn't necessarily need to be. So you are allowed to be proactive and we hope that you will do so. And I think I will pass it over now.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see all of you. I would like to first thank Mrs., say Mrs., Megan McGowan-Crouch for meeting with us and all of the staff that were there. They were more than than open to meeting and we had a great conversation. So I wanted to just end, well, begin the ending of this presentation with saying that to all of you, it's good to see each and every one of you and in the absence of Mr. Brett Smith as well and all of you in your respective places.
You give us your name and address real quick.
Thank you, sir. Joshua Lewis, 1106 State Road, Auburn, Alabama. One day, Mayor Andrew, we'll get it right.
Sorry, man.
One day, we'll get it right.
Practice makes perfect.
It won't be today. I want to begin or continue this in just kind of drawing out or calling our attention to the logo of our great city, that is Auburn. As Auburnites, we are familiar with our logo being this beautiful A with the lamp being there and that flame. And it's usually in a beautiful bright blue, ambient color. But even in that gray metallic steel color, it still rings true to who we are as Auburn. And just with that in mind, it's interesting to note with that A being there in the city website stating that this A being the beginning of the alphabet is representation, in my own words, of our city being the first or leading out front of the other cities. And it mentioned the first thing that we wanted to lead in, that was quality of life, right? You know, truly, you know, the city of Auburn has been leading these other cities. I mean, even with the Milken Institute ranking being number 17 in 2021. I mean, that's something. That's more than 10 spots above Tuscaloosa, thank God, right? And, you know, and that brings me to something. Because when we talk about a light, a lamp, and a city that is on a hill like Auburn, me being a pastor, I can't help but think about the words of Christ and Christ talking about saying that a city on a hill cannot be easily hidden. And he also says that a lamp that's placed under a bushel cannot give light. And with this city being what it is, being ranked as high as it is in so many different reports, not just the Milken Institute report, but so many others. And with all that is going on, I can't help but to say that with the current conditions that we have and even with the city staff's proposed map, with all the work that went into it, we, the people, believe that Auburn's bright lamp of hope and great quality of life is being put on a basket of underrepresentation. This is not accusations, excuse me, of ill intent toward anyone, at least not at this moment at all. Like I said, we've had good conversation and good collaboration and hopefully more. This is me expressing the people's concern and desire for not just a legal map, but also legal and equitable to majority minority districts, we believe. It's not only legal, but righteous and necessary. As we know, minorities are not a monolith. However, as we, the NAACP and the public, work alongside you all to look at the political cohesion across minorities along with other factors, our hope is that we are able to remove the covering from the proverbial lamp that is Auburn. Again, thank you for your time and willingness to hear the hearts and the voices of the often heard. And we look forward to diving in these righteous waters of redrawing the districts to ensure that all are heard. And just in ending this, I remember Manager Crouch saying that, you know, we haven't taken, the good attorney hasn't taken a deep dive into it yet. And hopefully, we all can take a dive into that together. And we can come to the most equitable, not just legal, but I think the most equitable, you know, map. And I think that it'd go a long way in leading the other cities who are looking because they are looking. The whole world is watching to see what Auburn will do. And I believe we're going to do the right thing, all right? Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the presentation?
Finish the presentation?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to hand out ice cream, but I'll do that.
Mr. Allen, it does? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Put the public hearing still on.
No, 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 that's fine. The public hearing's open. We're just going to take the presentation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Anders. Well, good evening, Mayor Anders, and city council, city council members. My name is Dr. Joanna Abram. I reside at 206 Timberdale Court, Auburn, Alabama, of course, in Ward Two. So I have to say, when I came before the council a couple of weeks ago, speaking on behalf as the president of the Auburn Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I made one request to allow us to hear your hearts and for you to hear the citizens' hearts. So I would like to say thank you. So I come before you right now just to say thank you for allowing that to take place. I did not attend the meeting yesterday. I'm not, I was not a part of that meeting, thank God. But I will say that I am very pleased to be here tonight to hear what has taken place because it seemed as though our request as a chapter here that's been here since 1978, coming forth here in Auburn and growing up here in Auburn, I want to say thank you because you indeed did as we requested. So I want to say thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for listening and for working together across everyone's hearts and listening to everyone. Thank you. Chao poa da.
Mayor Anders, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Herbert Walter DeMar Jr., 412 Opelika Road, Apartment 111. I live in a apartment complex community that is what you would call diverse and has a number of minorities in it. And not just African Americans. There are at least two people originally from Africa and several from the Middle East because mostly they're connected with Auburn and a number of young families. And there are some even whites among those two floors. As I stated at the last meeting in reference to redistricting plan, I live two lots away from Byron Smokehouse and across Ross Street is the post office that I think right now, according to the current map, is in the district represented by Mr. Smith, the ward represented by Mr. Smith. And the other side of Opelika Road where Uncle Charlie's is and where the car treatment thing is and where the barber beauty salon is, that's in the district represented by Ms. Whitten. Or in the ward. I keep saying district, it's ward. And I have nothing personally against them or any of you on the council. I noticed that both of the maps, the one that the, the one that was before you that the city manager proposed along with a consultant and the NAACP's map, both have both sides of that Opelika Road in one ward or district. And I would support that from a personal standpoint, but also from the standpoint of the spirit of the city of Auburn, at least, you know, and personally supporting fair representation based on what federal law says. I would urge you to seriously look at the NAACP's map as it is now and any changes that are made later on. And I would hope that you would consider Section Two of the Voting Rights Act and also the issue of one person, one vote, as well as what the Alabama law says. And I thank you very much.
Who would be next?
Good evening. My name is Harriet Huggins. I live at 631 South Dean Road in Auburn. I come to you as the secretary of the League of Women Voters of East Alabama. This is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government with a focus on issues affecting voting and the democratic process. The redistricting process only comes up once every 10 years. And what we've heard tonight and two weeks ago, we need to consider in our discussion the common interest of minorities in the city of Auburn. We want to take the time to examine the possibility of two majority minority districts. That fact is imperative. We have, we know about the growth. We've seen the numbers and the percentages. And it seems only fair to those people that are sitting out here that this body represents that percentage as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kim White. I live at 228 Conrad Drive in Ward Five. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of East Alabama. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, redistricting is an important issue that deserves ample time for consideration. It seems that the vote may not happen tonight, and I hope that that's the case. As Harriet mentioned, the League of Women Voters has voiced its support of the Lee County NAACP's efforts. And I wanted to thank the city staff for meeting about the proof of concept map. I hope the council as a whole is willing to consider the new proposed map and the input from the citizens. The city's proposed map may meet the criteria that Mr. Walker mentioned in the committee of the whole meeting. But, you know, drawing one sufficient map doesn't mean it's the only possibility. I also wanted to address the comment about students not voting. So that is a bummer as a group that encourages active participation in government. And so I encourage the city to join in efforts of the League of Women Voters of East Alabama and other groups to encourage students to participate in the governments that represent them. So we count them in our census data. They are residents here. They should be informed and active in government. So I'm glad we have options for maps. I'm heartened by seeing Auburn citizens, you know, participate in this process and I hope that the talks continue. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions for the city manager? Or any questions, comments from the dice?
Okay. I want to, I want to move that this, I hope I worded it right. This portion of the, I guess it's the...
Redistricting plan consideration?
Mm-hmm. Redistricting plans because...
There you go.
Motion to postpone?
Yes. I want a motion to postpone it until further date. And I don't know what it...
January 4th?
January 4th. And would you like to continue or potentially reopen the public hearing?
And reopen the public hearing.
Reopen the public hearing that night.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right. So there's a motion to postpone tonight's vote until January the 4th. And at that time, also to continue the public hearing. And there is a second on that. So any further discussion from the council?
Counsel, I would like to note, Mr. Walker will be leaving after this. So if you have any questions while I was here, this would be the discussion time to ask them. If not, we can get back to you later with questions, obviously. Just want to be sure why he's here face to face. Just want to be sure why he's here face to face.
Well, some...
I do have some...
Do we need to dispose of the...
No, no, you're, you're in discussion.
We're in discussion still? Okay.
Because once you've voted to postpone, then, then you're postponed and we'll move on. Yep.
I want to thank, I think, I want to thank members of the community for offering alternatives, offering their opinions, digging into the process. It makes for a stronger community when people get involved. And if nothing else, this has just been a great opportunity for us to meet everybody, meet more people in our community, and I thank you for that. I also, I presume that after the analysis of the alternative map, we will get some type of report.
Yes, as I explained to the NAACP yesterday, because one of the, the things that you heard tonight is, you know, state law is, you know, has about three sentences in it about redistricting. And, you know, one of those is when you have the privilege of being the city manager, state law says you propose it. That proposal that is termed the city manager's proposal came with great work from my excellent staff, and that is a proposal point. From there, changes will be, you know, we will advise the council. Staff will advise the council on the data. Mr. Walker will, the city attorney will, and, and will advise you based on what we see. We absolutely, you know, the good outcome of our meeting, which was a very positive meeting, I agree, yesterday was the understanding that an alternative map was coming and the ask was, hey, take a timeout on looking at proof of concept, because we had spent almost two full weeks analyzing everything that we could, you know, to truly understand. And a lot of our meeting yesterday was talking about minutia, about data that, that the council doesn't need to get into the minutia yet. We were working on that to make sure we're on the same page, and this is just a collaborative process to make sure we all have the right data. But we'll look into it, you know. Dorman will look into it, Mr. Walker will look into it, and we're taking a deep dive on a number of things. I would anticipate why you haven't voted on this yet, that if we're not complete with that work and can't provide you accurate, accurate information, and I'll remind you, we all know the holidays are upon us, but our agenda goes out next Friday. Not this coming, I mean, but it's fast with the holidays, and Friday actually goes out Thursday because Friday's a holiday, so much is coming fast. So I will give you an update at that point, and if we're not ready to go, you know, with, with, with information that we're comfortable with, I would ask in a memo that you postpone again at that meeting, but we may continue to have dialogue. One of the challenges for the city council is for the entire body assembled to meet, a quorum assembled, you know, there's, and it's very open and transparent, there's public notice, you can't meet a quorum assembled just with different groups, not with the public present and so on. So this provides that opportunity for you to do that. We're broadcasting for those who can't be here, and it's the, the best process we have for public dialogue in front of the entire council. And so I'll be the first to tell you on January, before January 4th, if we're not ready to proceed, I'll, I'll advise you as such if we do not have additional data. Again, the purpose in starting this conversation tonight was to have the conversations that need to be had and for you to hear the public and have the input that you need and talk with everyone. So that's why we're here.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to postpone until January the 4th with the reopening of the public hearing on January the 4th, and we also have a second on that. Any other further discussion or questions from the council?
I have a...
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question for the city manager.
Sure.
So whenever we get around to voting on this, whether it be the 4th or if we delay it further, we are going to vote on a single map that you have presented to the council. Is that correct?
It's correct as we know it today, but we will advise you if, if, you know, one of the things in a deep dive in the data and the standards that, you know, Mr. Walker presented and the standards that we followed to, to make the map, I can assure you that, you know, we took a hard look at the data and spent much time doing this. So we want to be sure in what's being provided, that we're meeting all the standards we need to meet, and we'll provide an analysis of that. And if our legal counsel recommends something different, we'll advise you as such. But I don't know without us looking at, at this time, the proposed map is that we would, we would tell you if we propose you consider, you know, or we think a change needs to be made or what have you. But the map that's out there and advertises is the one that's on the agenda tonight.
So will you advertise a, a different map between now and our next meeting?
No, there will be no further advertisement at this time unless legal counsel tells me otherwise. We had, we had run, David Dorton will tell me, numerous ads in The Villager and the OA News just with the, the overall map, and there won't be any further maps run. Now, our redistricting website, if something changes or we were to put something else out there, we would do that, but the NAACP's map would not reside on the website because it's not the city's map. But we're happy if anybody provides, you know, a public records request, we'll, we'll provide the information they provided gladly to anybody in the public.
So will there be an opportunity for these continued discussions going forward for the city to prepare a different map than what has been publicized?
When you say the city, do you mean the staff?
I mean what's been publicized in the paper.
Staff at this time, without any further, you know, unless on the advice of legal counsel, we, we need to propose something different to you. The map is the map. What am I not understanding that you're asking?
You're, you're, you're pretty clear.
Right, so, but the caveat is we, we had a 3:00 PM today, an alternative map that the NAACP has requested in writing, and we had a meeting yesterday that we would review. We will thoroughly evaluate that map and report to you what it says. And if, you know, there, there's much talk about many different things, and until we can get a full analysis of it and criteria and, and Dorman and his team have time to review it and advise you accordingly to what it says or doesn't say and what, yes, there are legal interpretations, but I rely on the legal interpretations of the city attorney and the attorney we've retained that's a redistricting expert and other members of his team to advise you. And all we're going to do is advise, advise you moving forward. If something changes and what our advice is, we'll let you know. Meaning, I don't know yet, but, you know, as of today, before we've reviewed this map, that's the map that's out there.
But as with anything, this council has the authority...
Absolutely.
If a majority agrees to amend anything in front of us or propose...
That's correct. You, we are only proposing, as with anything that we do, and you're absolutely right. You are the governing body, and you're the elected officials, and the majority of you will make the decision. And we're here to advise you and help you navigate through that decision process.
If we find, and don't shoot me for asking this question, but if we find that the council dates don't line up with really the, the abilities to make the right decisions in this process, could we consider a special called meeting to have this one item on the docket for consideration?
I believe that we can. Mr. Davidson, do you see a reason we could not call a special meeting? As long as it's properly noticed, I think we would be fine to do so.
Thank you.
Will there be, I'm trying to figure how to incorporate proposed changes with what we've already got. Would it be a census block by census block challenge if, if someone on the council wanted a particular block of census blocks or a group of census blocks moved from Ward X to Ward Y? Do we, is that the format that you're looking for as far as the detail of input from the council, if we have specific changes?
There is much that goes into that. We have to rewrite legal descriptions. And we have to, our surveying crew spent a lot of time putting that together, so we would actually have to rewrite. And so that may delay our ability to publish an ordinance or what have you, but we can rewrite it if we understand what it is and the majority of you want to change.
Connie, I believe you had something?
Well, actually, mine is not a question, it's actually a comment. I just wanted to thank the city staff, the city staff and the NAACP for, you know, getting together and trying to work some, work, work through it, work through this redistricting process. And I also want to say that, you know, even if by chance that the, that the council agrees upon considering whichever map, I just don't want people to feel like it's an intimidation because we are trying to get to, I guess y'all call it minority, majority or majority minority districts, that, you know, this council still, at the end of the day, could look just like it looks now. You know, it's, to me, it's about just doing the right thing, putting the right thing in place. And so it's not that, I don't think anyone's trying to make it seem like, oh, okay, well we just got to have two blacks on the council, we just got to have a minority and a black on the council, whatever the deal is. Because even, even if anything changed, you still got to find a candidate for the, for whichever ward it is or whatever. So I, you know, just to put forth the effort and just to, to know that we're, as a city and as, as elected official, just doing, trying to do the right thing is what really matters. So, you know, I don't want nobody in their heart to feel like that somebody's trying to replace somebody for any particular reason or one another. It's just about doing the right thing. And I think as citizens of Auburn, I just think that people have the, should have the choice of electing anyone they want on the council, whether it's in Ward One or all the way down to Ward Eight. And if that person changes in my seat, that's, that's the choice of the citizens. So it's, it's just all about just, you know, getting the maps right and doing the right thing according to the law. So I just wanted to make that statement and just, you know, let everybody know my feelings on it and that I don't just feel like I'm, you know, I'm just the only minority sent here and everything don't go in my favor for some reason, so I need some more favors on the council. That's not the case, because it does, some things, a lot of things do go in my favor. And I, you know, I just want to be, you know, give people on this council the opportunity to, you know, to express myself on that. You know, I don't think everybody just did sit against me because I'm black. I hope you're not, you know, but, but, but I just want to, you know, be able to just, to represent the people as the census and the data states. Am I making myself pretty clear on that? So, so I just want everybody just to know that, and that's just my, my feelings about that.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? No, ma'am. The public hearing is closed. Yes, ma'am.
There will be an opportunity, though, at the very end of the meeting, ma'am. You will be able to speak at the very end on any item you want for three minutes. Okay.
Councilwoman Taylor, I do appreciate your comments. I, I do, it resonates strongly with me the idea of goodwill and in good spirit that, that this redistricting occurs. I would also like to acknowledge that good spirit in that first meeting that we had, the first work session where you spoke with good spirit about the creation of Ward One and the intent behind that was in good spirit. And I appreciate the extension of that good spirit being contributed by the public. And, and it mean, it, it's meaningful and it, and it deserves our full attention.
Just to wrap this up and we'll move on, is I just want to, I want to be thankful again to the staff. The staff led by Megan put hours and hours of time into this and utilized as many resources as possible to get us the map that we have started with, and I'm grateful for your intent and your effort. I'm also very proud, as I stated two weeks ago, that we live in a community that our neighborhoods are becoming more and more blended with the people who live there. And I believe that's very positive for Auburn and for Auburn's future. I'm also continuing to be thankful for the passion that people in our community share for the decisions that we make here as a council and that how our community operates and functions. And I believe that's extremely helpful and, and healthy. And tonight's discussion and presentation has been another example of that. And certainly to the map that has been offered to us late this afternoon, it will get our full attention and we'll give it the best look we can. And as the city manager said, it is the holidays, and there are a number of days off that our employees will have over the next two weeks. And so where are we going to be on January 4th? I'm not quite sure. But we do have to get this done by the middle of February, and we will, we will get it done by the middle of February. But I just appreciate everybody's efforts and understanding. Okay? All right, we'll move forward to resolutions now.
Did you vote on the postponement?
Did we vote on the postponement?
No.
No, sir. That's a rhetorical question, mayor.
Thank you. All in favor of postponing until January the 4th and also reopening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move forward now with resolutions.
All right, mayor, under resolutions, item 10A1 is a request from Brett Basquen on behalf of Dawson Family Limited Partnership for conditional use approval of institutional office, road service, commercial support, and commercial and entertainment uses for approximately 49.14 acres of property zone DDH located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Cox and Wire Roads. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its November 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a request from Brett Basquen on behalf of DGM Financial LLC for revised conditional use approval of institutional uses, an assisted living facility and nursing home for property located at 350 Sanford Village Court in the Comprehensive Development District zoning district with a PDD overlay. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its December 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A3 is a request from Brett Basquen on behalf of PSM Alabama Holdings LLC and TD Development Incorporated for conditional use approval of office uses and reclassification of a neighborhood shopping center to community shopping center for property located at 2449 Moores Mill Road in the limited development district with a planned development district overlay. The planning commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of one to five at its November 9th meeting. The applicant has requested that this item be postponed to February 1st, 2022 city council meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval. Second.
All right, have a motion and a second.
And now postpone.
All right, is there a motion to postpone?
Yes, I'd like...
Go ahead, Ms. Whitten.
I move to postpone this resolution to a date certain of February 1st, 2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to postpone to February the 1st, 2022. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. This time is citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that would be on your mind. We'd ask that you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and remember that you have three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, my name is Robert Wilkins. I'm with, I'm with, I'm at 261 Denson Drive, Auburn, and I wanted to talk again about short-term rentals, which y'all are excited about. I wanted to ask a question. When do you draw the line between the true ordinance and what you say is in the ordinance? And the reason I'm saying this is that I've got an example. 12 days ago, my wife and I appeared for the court via phone because of her condition and talked with the judge. And the judge said, asked us if we were in violation of ordinance 3288, and we said, yes, we were. And even though we felt like it was violation of our constitutional rights, but still we were in violation of an ordinance that you have, you know, passed and so forth. And then we were about to get off the phone, and the prosecutor interrupted the judge and said that he needed to add some things to that. And that's what my concern is, and it's, it's very upsetting. And what, what the prosecutor said, that we were not allowed to have our, our internet website, and I've spent six and a half years developing that. We have about 200 people that have responded to us. We do have the lawsuit, you know, in, in February the 1st, and all of a sudden someone tells us, and to me, taking my civil, civil liberties away by saying that we cannot have a website. And I, I read the ordinance over and over, and I could not find it, that it said that that could be done. And you spent three years doing the ordinance, and then you spent, I don't know, four, five weeks or whatever deciding that we couldn't have our website. And I think that's totally in violation. I went, I went and paid my $251 for the court costs to make sure that, you know, I want to contribute my part of the building here. And then when I was there, I saw the prosecutor, and I, I went down, and he was kind enough to talk to me, and I told him my concern. was kind enough to talk to me, and I told him my concern. And he didn't seem to care, but he also seemed to say that, or he wouldn't tell me who said it, what, why was it said. I soon became from, from the top of the bureaucracy within the city, but I don't understand why we're done that way. I think it needs to be changed, because I don't think it takes anything but the mayor. I don't see it being a vote or anything, it's just something that shouldn't have been done. It was part of my stipulation, and I felt like it was in total violation. So I just wanted to, to state it to you. And then I wanted to say, I asked Santa to give me 151 people their constitutional rights back. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Who will be next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Margaret Stevens. I live at 2239 Wire Road in Auburn, Alabama. And I just wanted to say that I'm not a member of a minority group, but I very much favor increased representation of minorities on the city council to more accurately and equitably represent our, you know, our current population. And I don't think I'm alone in that. I think many, many people who are not minorities would also favor a second majority minority ward. So I, I, I am a member of the League of Women Voters, but even if I were not, personally, I, and that's a very honorable group, that's been very involved in Alabama, you know, matters for a long time. Anyway, I, I favor our amending the map and adding another majority minority ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Who will be next? Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
I moved.
Where adjourn?